Begins our council meeting. We are glad to have Frank Sullivan, who is going to lead us in a prayer. In honor of his birthday, we're going to ask Pam Haslip to do the pledge. Shall we stand, please?
Let's pray together. Dear Father, Lord of heaven and earth, I thank you tonight that you're here with us, that your son has kept his promise that you would be with us always, and that you are among us here at City Hall. Father, I pray for those who've been listed on the prayer list for tonight, for Kayla Branneman and Hale family, for Lisa Cross, for the William Tankersley family, for the Sarah Nichols family, for Phyllis Huey, for Rick Rollin. Father, I pray for Jackie Sharp, for Benny Matthews, and for the Helen Hardison family. We may not all know what these situations are, Father, but you do, and we ask you to move in the way you know should be moved. Father, you are always true and faithful, even when we are not, and you bless us. You've blessed us here in Lewisburg, Father, for nearly 200 years now, but tonight, we particularly, Father, we acutely need your help. We pray tonight, in our city, for the growing gap between wages and housing costs. We pray for it to stop growing, to close up even. We pray for the utter elimination of the drugs that infest and infect our homes and schools and streets, and for the equally utter and complete recovery of all those who fall and prey to them. We pray that the surge in homelessness that accompanies rising housing costs and addiction will stop surging, that parks can be parks again, that hotels can be hotels again, that homes can be homes again, and that every person who resides in this city lives in one. I ask you, Father, to bless our factories, our businesses, our restaurants, our schools, our hospitals and clinics and doctors' offices. I plead with you, Father, to move our churches, to reclaim their place as salt and light in the community, to concern themselves less with getting people to church and more with getting the church to go to people. Please, God, Father, here in Lewisburg, help us to cling to the good of the past while also reaching forward and grabbing hold of the better that lies in our future. And I pray, Father, for those who work for and help lead our city, especially the men and women who will be sitting tonight in the seats in front of me. I thank you that these men and willing are willing to give their time and their energy and their tears and probably a few wrinkles to the job. And I pray for them, Father, for councilpersons Burns and Crutcher and Michael and Robinson and Thomas, for Mayor Bingham, for City Manager Haslip, for our city recorder, Gina, and for our city attorney, Mr. Hutto. I pray that, Father, you will span the dangerous divides between them and build a bridge that is built with wisdom and trust, transparency, cooperation, forgiveness, and a love for our city that is so strong that it will leave all traces of self-interest in the grave where they belong, alongside all of their and all of our excuses and distractions and indifference. Bless them tonight, Father, in such a way that it blesses all of us, we ask, in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Please, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you both. Gina?
Whereas the mayor and council wishes to allow the citizens of the city of Lewisburg to voice their opinions, concerns, or comments, and et cetera, whereas the Lewisburg City Council holds a regular meeting the second Tuesday of each month. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Lewisburg that, number one, citizens will be allowed to address the council during citizens' input. Number two, citizens addressing the council must abide by the following guidelines: name given and address given for the record, given subject matter description, understand there will be no voting, three minutes maximum to speak, address the council, not the audience, no personal attacks, no religious comments, and no more than three minutes on the same subject. Once the meeting is adjourned, we ask that everyone exit the meeting room and the property in a timely manner. Thank you.
Okay, we're ready for the presentation.
Okay, number one, this is an announcement recognition for the Lewisburg Recreation Center. The mayor and council proudly recognizes our Lewisburg Recreation Center director and dedicated staff for their outstanding service to our community. Their commitment to exceptional customer service, helpfulness, patience with children, and genuine care for all who visits the facility, and it exemplifies the highest standards of professionalism. We are grateful for their hard work and dedication in making the recreation center a welcoming and enjoyable place for our community and out-of-town visitors. And Carrie?
Thank you, mayor and council. I have an email, you all have this in your packet, that I would like to read on behalf of our aquatics team. Ms. Schultz, this email was addressed to Dee. She is not with us today, she's out of town. But Ms. Schultz, I'm writing to commend you on the Lewisburg Recreation Center swim facilities and swim lessons. First, the facilities and staff are top-notch. Everywhere is clean and well-maintained. My family has only lived in Lewisburg a few years. We came from West Tennessee. Don't get me wrong, there are very nice facilities and programs there, but you go over and above. There were 10 lifeguards on duty one day last week when the pool was very packed. I was watching my grandchildren, but to know there were others who were helping me was such a great relief. The lifeguards do not just sit on their stands either. They actively watch and call swimmers out when they do anything that could cause harm to themselves or others. The staff that man the information areas are very friendly, knowledgeable, and helpful. When you are new to the area, this is very helpful, but even to those that have lived in Lewisburg a long time, it is very appreciated. Again, the facilities being clean and well taken care of shows the respect not only you have, but the staff have for the facility. Second, one grandson had swimming lessons last week and another had lessons this week. The lifeguards related very well to the kids. They were friendly and very knowledgeable. The instructors were fun, but maintained the respect of their students. They made full use of the hour they had to teach and was very respectful of start and stop times. I know there's been controversy in the past regarding the recreation center, and that goes with all good things, but your facility is a great facility and the staff is exceptional. The facilities are well-maintained and respected. The city of Lewisburg and the adjoining communities are very blessed to have this facility and this staff to provide recreation and learning opportunities for our area. Again, I applaud you and the entire staff. I'm not sure who else should receive this email, so I ask you to please forward this email to those that need to see it and know the value and worth of not only this facility, but also the professionalism and the worth of the management and staff. Great job, and thank you. Mary Hickman.
Do you have any of your staff here with you?
Actually, mayor, I have several of our lifeguards here with us today, and I would like for them to come up, guys, if you don't mind. One thing I would like to say about this staff is that most of these are students in high school and several are in college, and working at the rec center helps pave their way through college. It helps pay their insurance, it helps pay their car notes, their cell phones, and maybe a potential date every now and again. But, no, this is a great staff, and I would like for you guys to applaud them for the hard work that they do.
We'll just...
Okay, sorry.
Before we do that, okay, we are, in just a second. Go ahead. Are you finished?
Yes, sir.
Well, I want to congratulate you and your staff. That's outstanding, and I understand you have some good news for us later in the program.
Yes, sir.
But these employees are typical of all our city employees. They work under difficult conditions, underpaid and understaffed, but they still do a great job. So now, I'd like for us all to applaud these.
Thank you.
Would any of your... Would you guys like to say a word?
Anybody want to say anything?
Nothing crazy. I was talking to some of my fellow lifeguards who are not here right now, and I would like to also commend that we have three people working in the indoor pool right now that would also like to be commemorated. Their names, Devin, what's Devin's last name? Bassora, Devin Bassora, Austin Hafner, and Dixie Vickers. So they would have liked me to let y'all know that they wanted to be here, but they were working, so.
Sound good.
Thank you again so much. And Carrie will be hearing from you at the end of the meeting.
Yes, sir.
And you all are welcome to stay. It's time for citizens' input. Anybody who wishes to address the council, please come to the podium. Give your name and address, and you're limited to three minutes, which we are a little liberal on that. Anybody? Gina?
Item three, approval of minutes for July 8th, 2025.
Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Sir.
Sir. Councilwoman Michael and Councilman Shannon Crutcher, second set, is there discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Thomas?
Aye.
Councilman Michael?
Aye.
Councilman Crutcher?
Aye.
Councilman Burns?
Aye.
Councilman Robinson?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item.
Item four, approval of July 2025 deals and June 30th, 2025 financial statement.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Councilman Robinson makes the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Michael, second set motion, is there discussion? Call the roll, please.
I would just like to say that if you look on page 14, this is... I just want to commend all the departments, as well as the finance department, for a great budget. The revenue was slightly over, and everybody's expenditures were under budget for the year. So, great job, guys.
Amen to that. Further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Thomas?
Aye.
Councilman Michael?
Aye.
Councilman Crutcher?
Aye.
Councilman Burns?
Aye.
Councilman Robinson?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item.
Line five, O Business, consider approval, a second reading of ordinance 25-09, ordinance by owner request to resume rezon property located at 650 Spring Place Road, map 071B, Group C, parcel 026.00, within the corporate city limits of the city of Lewisburg, from I-1 Light Industrial to C-2 Intermediate Business. Planning Commission gave a favorable recommendation vote, five to zero. Owner is Edward Tankersley, Lynn Tankersley, and Stephen Bradley Houghton.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to pray.
Councilman Burns makes motion, is there a second?
I second.
Councilman Crutcher, second set motion, is there discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Thomas?
Aye.
Councilman Michael?
Aye.
Councilman Crutcher?
Aye.
Councilman Burns?
Aye.
Councilman Robinson?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item.
Item six, new business, consider a sale of Fire Squad 1, 2016 Chevrolet Silverado 3500 HD 4x4 truck, reserve bid of $15,000 through GovDeals' online auction website.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Councilwoman Thomas makes the motion, is there a second?
I second.
Councilman Crutcher, second set motion, is there discussion?
Your mayor, is any other department could use that truck before we sell it, or?
I don't think we'd wish that on anybody.
Okay.
Yeah, if you got an enemy, let him have that truck.
You answered my question.
I've been arguing that case all week, man. That's what I was like, man.
I called earlier, before the board session, and he was like, oh, no, I don't think so.
Yeah.
Further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Thomas?
Aye.
Councilman Michael?
Aye.
Councilman Crutcher?
Aye.
Councilman Burns?
Aye.
Councilman Robinson?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item.
Item seven, I'm sorry, item six B, consider approval...
Thank you. Thank you.
Consider approval of Resolution 2516, a resolution renaming W.P. Johnson Park, part located at Jones Circle to Willie J. Mitchell Park.
Ronald, would you like to make that motion?
I would make that motion.
I second it.
Motion by Ronald, second by Shannon. Is there discussion?
Do we need to mention the changing of the sign down on the field? I don't see it in here. You said renaming the park, but the sign, it won't change the name on the sign, too. Do we need to get that in that resolution to make it official?
What's the sign going to cost, changing the sign?
Well, still getting bids. I got one bid for $2,800.
Okay.
But I think we can probably do better.
Mr. Hutto, do you think we need to put that in?
Say something.
Do you say something?
He's still thinking.
Well, I think that the...
It says...
Number two, the signage will be updated to reflect the name of the...
Uh huh.
No, no.
That's separate. That's separate.
That's separate. That's naming the street, redoing the street in front of the church.
Yeah, that's a separate item.
Yeah, it is.
Do we need to put a cost in there not to exceed?
In section two, it says appropriate signage shall be placed to reflect this designation. Down on the bottom, where it says section two. It just don't say it on the agenda, but it said that in the resolution.
It's in the resolution.
It's right there, section two.
It's in there, yeah.
As long as it's in the resolution, it's in there.
Further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Thomas?
Aye.
Councilman Michael?
Aye.
Councilman Crutcher?
Aye.
Councilman Burns?
Aye.
Councilman Robinson?
Aye.
Six C, consider approval of Resolution 25-17, a resolution approve signage of W.P. Johnson Way, which dedicates a proportion that should be all of Hill Street, which leads up to the Greater First Baptist Church, in honor of Reverend W.P. Johnson. So that proportion should be all, all of Hill Street. I think, wasn't it from Fiat? I mean...
Yes.
Right, and that's what we talked about. The picture has it on there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Councilman Robinson, would you like to make that motion?
Yes, I'd like to make it with that change from portion to all.
Is there... Councilman Robinson makes a motion, is there a second?
I second.
Councilman Crutcher, second set motion. Is there discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Thomas?
Aye.
Councilman Michael?
Aye.
Councilman Crutcher?
Aye.
Councilman Burns?
Aye.
Councilman Robinson?
Aye.
Item six D, consider approval of Resolution 2518, a reimbursement resolution prepared by the Cumberland Securities that will allow the city of Lewisburg to reimburse the general fund for any qualifying expenditures incurred prior to the upcoming debt resolution for capital improvements in expenditures.
I have a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Councilwoman Michael makes a motion, is there a second?
I second it.
Councilman Robinson, second set motion, is there discussion?
Your mayor, I got a question. I asked Mr. Thomas that, when we transferred the ARPA funds at the end of the year, most of it has been committed, but the amount that was not committed, was it $30,000 or $40,000?
Yeah, it's about 32, I think. It was just around $30,000, just under that.
Yeah, and that part went to health insurance and...
And all of that that was remaining unspent went to reimburse the general fund for expenses, yeah, insurance, health.
So that was about $32,000. We talked about $700,000, but it's really 32, right?
Well...
32 also.
There's $700,000 unspent, including that $27,000 or so. So all of that went into fund balance.
But it was unspent, but it was like the fire truck?
Yes.
And that $700,000 included the fire truck, right?
Yes, it did. Yeah.
Okay.
Now that's all in regular, unassigned fund balance.
Okay, okay.
So, and then those monies that we projected will not be spent, for the end of last year, we budgeted for those projects.
We just kind of parked it there so we would not lose the grant or the balance of the grant, right?
Right, just to comply with federal guidelines as far as deadlines.
Right, right.
When you had to spend the money, basically, on December 31st.
So the $700 that we discussed is, it was really already committed, just not spent, right?
Most of all, that was really already committed.
Yeah, I got it, got it.
Except for the $27,000 or so.
Yeah, yeah, got it, got it. I'm sure, I'm sure.
Further questions?
I have one, mayor. Just to ensure that the only capital items being worked are those that were specified in the budget document that will be subject to this debt resolution.
What does that mean?
Say that again.
I'm wanting to verify that only capital projects that were listed in the budget document are ones that would be reimbursed for and that are being worked.
Yes, now, we couldn't move forward with any capital project that was not in the budget.
All right, just checking.
Further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Thomas?
Aye.
Councilman Michael?
Aye.
Councilman Crutcher?
Aye.
Councilman Burns?
Aye.
Councilman Robinson?
Aye.
Thank you. Next.
Six E, consider approval of Resolution 25-19, a resolution to approve, to make application for the public entity partners Judy Housley Safety Grant to purchase safety items, safety equipment, and footwear which reimburses up to $2,000.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to pray.
Second.
Councilman Burns makes the motion, Councilwoman Thomas, second set motion, is there discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Thomas?
Aye.
Councilman Michael?
Aye.
Councilman Crutcher?
Aye.
Councilman Burns?
Aye.
Councilman Robinson?
Aye.
Next.
Six F, consider approval of first reading of Ordinance 25-12, an ordinance request for rezoning property located at an unaddressed Old Farmington Road, map 057, parcel 094.00, within the corporate city limits of the city of Lewisburg, from C-2 Intermediate Business to R-2 Medium Residential. Planning Commission gave a favorable recommendation, vote five to zero. Owners are Chesney and Raymond Joseph Gold.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Councilwoman Michael makes a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Robinson, second set motion, is there discussion?
Mayor, I have concerns if they raise the elevation and it floods the neighbors or anything like that. But the way I understand it, they got to go back for the planning commission and do engineering studies to make sure they could even do this, right?
That's what I understand.
Correct.
Further questions? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Thomas?
Aye.
Councilman Michael?
Aye.
Councilman Crutcher?
Aye.
Councilman Burns?
Aye.
Councilman Robinson?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item.
Six G, consider approval of first reading of Annexation Resolution 25-13, a resolution requested by the Marshall County Highway Department to annex approximately one mile of Finley Beach Road, described as, from the west starting point of CSM Allen B. Worthing Memorial Bridge, going east one mile to the end of 1404 Robin Hood Road, map 072, parcel 001.00, into the corporate city limits of the city of Lewisburg. The Planning Commission gave unfavorable recommendations, five to zero.
Mr. Hutto, how did we handle this before?
I fully agree, I had a motion to deny the resolution, the resolution. It was the way we handled it last time.
Do I have such a motion?
Yes, I'll make the motion to deny this Annexation Resolution 25-3. And I'll second it.
Councilman Michael makes the motion. Councilwoman Thomas, second set motion, is there further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Thomas?
Okay, we're voting on denying it, correct?
Yes.
Correct.
Councilman Michael?
Aye.
Councilman Crutcher?
Aye.
Councilman Burns?
Aye.
Councilman Robinson?
Aye.
Thank you. Next.
Item six H, consider approval of first reading of Annexation Resolution 25-14, a resolution required by the Marshall County Highway Department to annex approximately one mile of Robin Hood Road, described as, from the north starting point of intersection of Finley Beach Road and Robin Hood Road, going south one mile to the end of 1480 Fayetteville Highway, map 064, parcel 038.00, into the corporate city limits of Lewisburg. The Planning Commission gave an unfavorable recommendation by five to zero vote.
Do I have a similar motion on this?
I'll make that motion.
To deny?
To deny.
Is there a second to that motion?
I second.
Councilman Crutcher, second set motion. Is there discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Thomas?
Aye.
Councilman Michael?
Aye.
Councilman Crutcher?
Aye.
Councilman Burns?
Aye.
Councilman Robinson?
Aye.
Under Other Business, City Managers' Report.
Yes, first, I want to give a report on our animal shelter. I get a report at the end of each month. There's been some confusion. We share costs with the county, and there's been some misinformation about some of what's going on at the animal shelter, whatever, so I want to start sharing this report each month. I just got one copy, I just got it, so I'll read it to you. You can see it if you want to, but it's for the end of July. There were four dogs adopted, three dogs rescued, five returned to the owner. There were zero euthanized. We are a no-kill shelter. We only put a dog down if we have to, if it's a vicious dog that's bitten somebody, or if it's a dog that's sickly and could spread the infection to the rest of the dogs. Other than that, we don't put them down. Monthly city intakes were eight dogs, monthly county intakes were eight dogs. At the end of July, there were a total of 16 dogs housed at the shelter, nine from the city and seven from the county. So I kind of want to make sure we get the right information out there about that. There was some controversy about dogs being used... There was some controversy about dogs being euthanized or put down, so I want to clarify that.
Thank you.
Um, I'll try to make sure we get that each month, y'all have a copy of it too.
I think we usually do, but it's usually...
Okay, okay.
It's usually...
So I'll put it out there for everybody to hear.
Well, the misinformation was about euthanizing.
Mm-hmm. This is my housing report. I thought I jazzed up a little bit this time with some color to, instead of me just telling you what's going on. We have actually four developments underway. We don't really have anything for Spring Valley Estates, but we do have King's Landing, which is off Ellington bypass. It's townhomes. We have Saddle Trace, which has townhomes and single-family homes on Highway fifty. And then we have Savannah Lakes on Franklin Pike. First one I got is King's Landing. If you look at the little colorful scheme there, the red are units that have actually been sold. The yellow are the ones that are under contract. And once they get one under contract, they're about ninety-eight percent done. The green are the units that are available. They don't get too far ahead of sale, so you won't see a lot of green until you see a lot of red out there. That's why we don't have to worry about being overrun and inundated with homes. They build these things in phases. Those developers are not going to build out a two-hundred-and-forty-home development just like that. They're going to do it in phases, okay? So, and out here at King's Landing, like I said, that's what we got going on. This map has probably changed. This was the latter part of last week when I went out there and got it. The one that's under contract is probably already sold. Some of those in green are probably now in yellow.
Are, are these potential additional potential buildings?
I ran out of paper, it's like five or six more of those sections. You'll just see about eight of them apart or whatever. Once they get to, they'll be built out. I think it's a hundred and twelve in all, one eleven or one twelve. These are done by D.R. Horton. The thing about them, they have their own financing. Once you start dealing with D.R. Horton, you're dealing directly with them. Have their own finance team. They do conventional loans, they do USDA loans, and they also do VA loans. So the opportunity is there. They have one-floor plan out there. They're all two-story, three bedrooms, two and a half baths, averaging fourteen hundred seventy-four square feet. You may get some of your in-units that have a little bit more square footage to them or whatever. One-car garage. Price range is two-twenty to two-thirty-five. Two-twenty, what happens there is some of the interior units, your in-units usually sell first because I don't have anybody on both sides of me. Some of the interior units sit around a little bit longer. If they've been there a specified amount of time, that's the ones they knock down to around two-nineteen or two-twenty. Okay? Saddle Trace, we'll start with the townhomes, that's the ones on the right side of your page. I couldn't get that map to pull up any bigger, I'm sorry. But it's the same process. The red units are sold. Green are available, yellow is under contract. And I think if I counted, it was like seventeen or eighteen already so. Six, seven available and one under contract. That's for the townhomes. They have one-floor plan with these townhomes, two-story, three bedrooms, two and a half baths, thousand four and eighteen square feet, one-car garage. They're going from two-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand to two-sixty-five-five. Saddle Trace will have a playground and a swimming pool. The ground is already being prepared for the playground and the swimming pool. Your saddle trace single-family homes, they have a price range from two-hundred-and-eighty thousand to the mid-three-hundred thousands. Depends on the floor plan. They have three-floor plan, plans for your single-family homes. They have the ChemRide, one-story, four bedrooms, two baths, one-car garage, one thousand five hundred and two square feet, starting in the three-hundred-and-ten-thousand-dollar range. They have what they call the Divine Floor Plan, one-story, three-bedroom, two baths, one-car garage, one thousand two hundred and seventy-nine square feet, starting at two-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand. Then they have the Hearts Floor Plan, two-story, four bedrooms, two and a half baths, one-car garage, one thousand five hundred and ninety-five square feet, starting in the three-hundred-and-twenty-thousand-dollar range. Savannah Lakes on Franklin Pike, single-family homes. They're going to have a swimming pool and a playground there as well. Price range is from three-hundred-and-twenty thousand to your mid-three-hundred-seventies. Depends on the floor plan. They offer four different floor plans. They have what they call the Aria, it's one-story, three-bedroom, two baths, two-car garage, one thousand six hundred and eighteen square feet. They start around three-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand. They have the Cali, it's a one-story, four-bedroom, two baths, two-car garage, one thousand seven hundred and seventy-four square feet, starting around three-hundred-and-forty-one thousand. They have the Edmund, which is a two-story bedroom, four-bedroom, two and a half baths, two-car garage, one thousand eight hundred and twenty-one square feet, starting at around three-hundred-and-fifty-six thousand. They have the Elston, which is a two-story, four-bedroom, two and a half baths, two-car garage, two thousand one hundred and sixty-four square feet, starting around three-hundred-and-seventy-one thousand dollars. You have Spring Valley Estates off Finley Beach Road. They haven't gone vertical yet, but they're pouring footers. And the codes department has already issued nine land disturbance permits. They made a slight change to their plans. They're going to combine three of the lots in order to build a clubhouse and a swimming pool. In addition to the swimming pool and clubhouse, they plan to have a playground, a dog park, and a trail for you to walk through out there. They'll offer what they call two collections, which are groups of plans within the community. Each collection has two floor plans. First one is the Classic Collection. In this collection, you have what they call the Primrose Floor Plan. It's two-story, four bedrooms, two and a half baths, two-car garage, two thousand one hundred and fifty-five square feet. Or you could have the Rosemary, which is two-story, four-bedroom, two baths, two-car garage, two thousand five hundred and seventy-five square feet. They didn't have a price range for those yet. Second collection is called the Grand View Collection. It includes what they call the Allen Floor Plan, one-story, three-bedroom, two baths, two-car garage, one thousand six hundred and seventy-three square feet, starting at around three-hundred-and-ninety thousand. Second floor plan is called the Asbury, one-story, three-bedroom, two baths, two-car garage, one thousand eight hundred square feet, starting at four hundred thousand dollars. I know that was long and that was boring, but we need to know exactly what we have coming to the city so we can give people some definite information as to what they're looking at.
Good.
So, that's all I got.
Okay, damn, I was asking, do you know if King's Landing or anybody knows, are they going to be an HOA?
Yes.
They are?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, all right, thank y'all.
We're trying to promote HOAs so they can have responsibility of all of this underwater stuff and all that so it don't become our responsibility to be maintained with all your detention ponds and all that stuff.
I've, I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
Is, is it correct that animal control only pick up dogs?
Yes.
Pick up, pick up any cats?
No cats.
There is a cat house.
Lucky's, is it, what is it, Lucky's Cat House or something?
Yeah, Lucky's Cat House.
You get lucky to catch them open. They have some very streamlined hours. It's like two or three hours a day, a couple of days a week or something like that.
That's outplayed by highway.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, but we're just dogs.
Additional questions for Mayor? Chris?
Thank you, Mayor, good evening, everyone. Before I start, I want to go over on August nineteenth at three P.M. in the city council chambers, we will have a work session before the planning commission. We're going to talk about planning unit developments. The public is welcome to come out and listen and have some input on that. Okay, on the permits, I have issued fifteen land disturbance permits, five accessory structure permits, four demo permits, one signed permit. And we had fourteen code violations, eleven still pending due to tall grass, and eleven have been closed. I mean, three hasn't been closed. Does anybody have any questions?
Questions for Chris? Appreciate what you're doing, you're, we're moving in the right direction, I believe.
Thank you.
All right, Chief Hawkins?
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Council. I don't have a whole lot tonight. The numbers for July were a total of a hundred and twenty-four calls for service for the fire department. Fifty-two of those were fire and seventy-two were medical-related. They logged seven-hundred-and-twenty-nine hours of training and we completed forty-seven life safety inspections. Through this morning, we have run eight-hundred-and-ninety-six total calls. That puts us on track to go a little higher than last year. We dropped down last year, but this year we're on track to go about sixteen, seventeen hundred calls, which is, will be the highest we've run ever. We did get our new engine in. I brought it to the work session the other night for y'all to take a look at. We have completed the outfit on it, other than some minor things that have to come off the currently in-service engine. We plan on placing that apparatus in service the second week of September. We plan on having a push-in ceremony to show, to share it and our new squad truck. I know a lot of people have seen the squad truck going up and down the street and heard it going up and down the street. But we want to, we want to share those pieces of equipment because we're very proud of them. All the firefighters are training on the new engine this, this month for the next three weeks. So hopefully I'll be sending out some flyers and some updates for that ceremony. We're looking at September the eighth if everything works out. But, but that's all I got, unless you have anything for me?
Questions for Drew?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Drew.
Jennifer?
Yep. Got to be louder. Thanks, Mayor, thanks, Council. You all have my report in your packet, so I'm just going to hit some highlights and then if you have any questions. So I met with Dave Highland, who's the H.R. manager for Multimatic. Had an exciting conversation with him. He had some really great ideas about subjects that are important right now for H.R. managers, really cutting-edge sort of, these are topics we want to talk about now. So Dave and I are going to get together and plan that and invite all the H.R. managers. I know Greg used to do things like that from time to time and it's, it's time to start doing those again. So his ideas spurred it on and so we're, we're planning that for the next couple of months. While I was there, I talked to Dave about how things are going at Multimatic and, and they're going well. They're averaging about nineteen dollars an hour. They have two shifts and have a hundred and twenty people. He was really proud that only ten percent of their staff is temp to hire. So the rest, the ninety percent are direct hire. We are planning a joint cleanup day with Amcor, which is very plastics. They were bought by Amcor. On September twentieth, their H.R. guy talked to me, reached out to me, that is apparently World Cleanup Day. So we decided we would work together to do a cleanup. We need volunteers, so anybody who wants to volunteer, I'll remind you again in September, but it'll be, it'll start at nine o'clock at City Hall. And Amcor is going to provide us lunch that day. So a lot of appreciation to them for thinking of it and helping us sponsor it. And they'll have volunteers as well. Let's see. Under the prospects, just a couple of things here. The West Commerce Building that we have, the CID Building, those folks are still in active talks with us about it. If it moves to real discussion, discussion of what they want to do, what they want to pay, of course it'll come to you guys since it's ultimately your decision about selling it or leasing it and, and prices for that. But they keep moving forward, so fingers, fingers crossed, everybody, everybody think on that one. I've had discussions lately with two entities that are interested in the ninety-six acres at the I sixty-five park, possibly a third, so we know all the work that needs to be done to that. So we'll, we'll encourage them and see where that goes. And there's another industry that's interested in the five acres behind Christian Brands on the I sixty-five, in the I sixty-five park, and, and those are the newest things that have come up lately with prospects. Just quickly on IDB, as you guys know, Luke Buckley replaced Eddie Wiles last month. That was official. IDB elected new officers at their meeting on, last Monday. Steve Adams is the new chair, Ginger Tepadino is the new treasurer, and Luke Buckley said he'd be the new secretary since I take notes and he doesn't have to. Tourism, the downtown improvement grant is going really well. Both the Dixie and Main Attractions are actually almost finished, so go see Main Attractions. You can, Dixie has fixed a lot of stuff and you can notice that it's new and shiny. Main Attractions has actually added on, they've put a porch on the side, it looks really nice. So drive down there and look at it. I think Mary Beth's done a good job with that. Next month, Ryan French of the Tourism Department and I are going to be presenting information on a potential hotel motel tourism tax. I'm not going to go into that now, we'll have a lot of information. It's something that's come up before. But I think that, that with Ryan and myself, we'll be able to walk you through what it means, who pays the tax, hint, it's not any of us, and what we have to do to get that going. So that'll be at the next work session. Ryan will be here with me to answer questions and do a presentation on that. Here's a cool thing, it's really cool. So there are these guys called Austin and Colin, and they do viral videos on towns throughout middle Tennessee and further afield. They started with Nashville, I don't know, have any of you guys seen these guys? Anyway, go on, go on your Instagram or your, or your Facebook or wherever you are and look for Austin and Colin. They do sixty-second videos for towns. They go viral, they get thousands of hits. It's huge for tourism. So Emily Darnell and I talked to them about a week ago about doing one for Lisburg and Marshall County and getting pricing from them, which the county will pay out of their hotel motel tax tourism dollars. So we're excited about that, we're talking with them about a date. We'll have some special guest stars in that. If anybody feels like they're camera-ready, let us know. But if you don't know who they are, I can see in your eyes you don't. It's really, really exciting. They're viral, they do a great job, they're funny. I can't wait for this to happen. One more thing I just wanted to draw your attention to, under my training and conferences and classes, I was accepted to the Tennessee, or I'm sorry, the TBA Rural Leadership Institute, starts next month. There are six classes over the course of three months. It's at no cost to us, it's, it's free, and I hope to learn a lot. I know Greg's been through it a few times, Emily's been through it, they've both gotten a lot out of it. So I'm really looking forward to learning from them. That is what I got. Any questions?
Yeah, Multimatic, is it on Old Belfast Road?
Multimatic, yeah.
Industrial Drive.
Yeah.
Is it on industrial?
It is, yeah, yeah, it's, it's, you go out industrial drive and it's...
It's next to Berry?
No.
I thought you mentioned that it was next to...
No, I, no, I talked about Berry and Multimatic, but separately.
Okay.
Yeah.
Past Ammit Stables, Mayor.
Yeah.
Steve Annett Stables, Industrial Drive's down there on the left.
Yeah.
Okay.
Anything else?
Yeah, I got a couple. The, the company that you mentioned in here, you didn't mention that, but they said they may be looking at land close to the current plant. Have they identified anything?
Are you talking about Mintz?
Well, yeah, I was going...
Well, I mean, Mintz is on, well, Mintz is on there from last time, so it's not confidential.
Well, have, have they identified any land that would work for them?
We have talked about land that would work for them, but they haven't, they haven't pulled the trigger on it.
Okay. And the H.R., that's a great thing that y'all reviving and doing again. And think about this one day, because I know the mayor and past some of the council members, maybe once a quarter, once every six months, had a lunch to talk to one or two industries around the table. So I'd like to see us do that sometime and any council member and the mayor that want to attend just to talk about, you know, what the city can do.
Yeah.
What they can do, what anybody here can do to help them grow and expand.
Okay, perfect. And I will, you know, I will be sure that you all know when we do this too because I think, you know, that is, it's not all a give and take and Q and A for them to talk to you, but I think it's a, it's a time when that can happen as well, so.
And my last thing, you mentioned Ford in here is a supplier. Ford announced a plant in Kentucky, I guess it was yesterday. Could you check sometime and see about the Ford down in Torsh Jackson in east, west Tennessee?
Mm-hmm.
Is that still on go or not, or?
The, the big Ford plant that they're putting over there in west Tennessee?
Can you just check on that later?
Sure, yeah.
Yeah, just to see.
I hope it's still happening, that's a huge deal and it's already...
They delayed part of that.
Yeah, they've already, they've already built a lot, yeah, but I'll check for sure.
Yeah, I think the mayor, they have delayed it, so could you give us an update on that sometime?
Yeah.
That's all I, that's all I got.
Other questions? Thank you, Jennifer.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Kent?
Just to pass some information along to you. You know, we're in the process over the next several years of redoing the taxiway out there. Hopefully next year, we'll start the lower half of the taxiway. States like us, they're waiting to get some money together for the upper half. So to help get us through until that can be completed in approximately 2030, the state, the last two weeks have been out. They have resealed the north end of the taxiway and they've restriped the north end. At no cost to us, that's, that's total, their, their, their ballgame there.
Really?
So, yes. Also, just information, and this changes every fifteen minutes, because honestly, it's changed four times since three o'clock this afternoon. But next Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday night, from approximately eight-thirty at night till one AM, there'll be three Blackhawks and one Chinook in the area. So if you hear, hear some noise or people's calling you, know we're not being invaded, it's just training, so.
Have you been in the tank yet?
In the tank?
I thought you had to get into the tank to clean it out.
Well, there's nobody in this building that's allowed in that tank. No, sir, I have not been in that tank. But we're still waiting on a truck. We gotta have a truck before we can do that. If we can get our, if we can get the fuel truck that we asked for, that was approved, then we do not have to rent a truck to hold fuel while we're cleaning it out. Otherwise, we gotta rent a truck at about eight thousand dollars. So, we're trying to wait.
Questions for Kent? Thank you, Kent. Brandon?
The only thing I have is, just to let y'all know, we were getting a little short on manpower at Public Works. But last week, I was able to start two full-time employees and I hired another five seasonal employees that started this Monday. So we're still short on manpower, but as, right now, every position is full down there. And also, I know there's been a lot of talk about sidewalks. We are focusing on sidewalks, cleaning them up, and getting them addressed. And that's all I have.
Questions for Brandon?
Appreciate you, Brandon.
Yes, sir. Thank y'all.
Thank you. I wanna get Carrie Matt up, but who's left? Oh, Alan.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Just a brief update where we're at with closing out the fiscal year. Making really good progress. You know, the state requires us to have the books closed, ready for audit by August thirty-first. The plan is to have everything ready by August fifteenth into this week. Actually be the eighteenth, that's when we should get our final state distribution. That's about the last thing that we need. We need to know that revenue so we can accrue it in the last year. That'll give us next week, really just kind of step back and review things. And hopefully, the, the plan is to get our trial balance to the auditor the week after that, the week of the twenty-second. So we'll, we're, we're well, well on schedule with the audit this year. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Questions for Alan?
Okay.
Thank you for what you do, you and Debbie. Carrie?
Okay, I have handed you guys a folder when we, when I first came in. Some information in here that the Recreation Board had asked that I share with you guys, as well as some other things. First, I wanted to start with, on July twenty-ninth, the Lewisburg community came together for the Red Sand Project, a powerful and interactive art initiative that raises awareness about human trafficking, modern slavery and exploitation. Participants of all age, of all ages poured red sand into the cracks of our sidewalks and the entrance road to the Lewisburg Rec Center, symbolizing those who too often fall through the cracks and are overlooked. About thirty community members joined in meaningful conversations, showing that every voice matters in the fight against human trafficking. And to mark this occasion, Mayor Bingham signed a proclamation declaring July twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-five as the Red Sand Project Day in Lewisburg, Tennessee, affirming our community's commitment to awareness, advocacy, and action. We had several children from the rec center that was walking to the store asking, what are you doing? What is this? What are you doing? And so we had the opportunity to talk to probably ten to fifteen kids about human trafficking and, and modern-day slavery and, and what it means. And, you know, to see something, say something. So it was, it was a very important project for us. I have a sales trend that I have put in there. It's the blue and white document. This is a progression over the five years of our revenue. And if you look at it, we have increased, the rec center has increased revenue eighty-eight percent since twenty-twenty, twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty. I just wanted to give you those numbers. Also, there's an income statement of last year's revenue and expenditures. And you'll see that we are at thirty-five percent this past year of our operating expenditures, which we made the national average. We're right there with the national average across the United States on Parks and Recreation and revenue, with their revenues and expenditures. One, we were talking about also at the rec board. One of our action items is how to increase revenues. And Mrs., Councilwoman Thomas had, had brought this up and would like to make this an action item. And we're doing some things, working on that. We have increased, this year effective July one, we increased our room rentals. We have increased our field rentals at the South Side Park, since we've done some improvements there. You'll see a colored sheet, it's a lot of, lot of numbers. You can look over it, go over it. But I was looking at our snack bar and one of the rate, we can increase revenues there as well. We have an opportunity to do that. You'll see that the blue column is just a twenty-five, a twenty-five cent increase on all of our items that we sell at our snack bar. The yellow item, or the yellow lines is the fifty cent increase. And when talking about this at the rec board, we noticed that in some items, you know, you could increase too much and, you know, just sell yourself out of business that way. But I did a combination and by doing some fifty cents, some twenty-five cents, you'll see it's the last, the last column there. We can increase our snack bar by about twelve thousand dollars in revenues by, by doing that. So we, I'm gonna take this back to the rec board next month and, and, and we can discuss that as well, as a way to increase some revenue. Got that. And then you have your Parks and Recreation Newsletter. The Andy Cook Tournament was a success. We will be, they will be donating a scholarship, a golf, to a golf player at one of the MCA, or one of the Marshall County schools. The indoor pool will close for construction when the dehumidifier comes in. We're, it's supposed to ship on August thirty-first. But the outdoor pool will be open during that time so that the folks will have a place to go. It's still warm enough for them to utilize the outdoor pool and we can send our lifeguards out there for that. Bid specs will go out this week for the indoor pool resurfacing. It was one of, it's one of our capital expenditures. I have those completed and I'll be getting with Gina to get that advertised and in the newspaper. I've also completed the specs for the window repairs in the gymnasium. I'll get with Alan and Debbie before we send those out, just to make sure we, we've got everything covered there. Also, the Marshall County swim teams, they had eighty-two members on their swim team this summer. They were able to donate new backstroke poles and, and flags to our facility. It was approximate, approximately about twelve hundred dollars worth of equipment they were able to donate to us. The community meeting for Jones Park is going to be August eighteenth at the Second Avenue Church of Christ at five PM. This is in lieu of the Recreation Board. Councilwoman Thomas, I know you had sent an email and I've not been able to get back with you on that. But the, the next meeting would be in September and that would be a, a normal rec board meeting. But we did talk and discuss if, if we needed to meet or, or look at anything that we can, we can do that as well on another day. Will be, the aerobics room floors have been sanded and sealed. They've not been, anything's done to them and I don't think ever, so they look great. And so we're gonna start some painting this fall in that room and throughout the facility as we can, just to brighten things up. We have, the new sprigs have been installed on the golf course. I think they're on, they're on every fairway except four and seven. It's cart path only until further notice. But hopefully in the next couple of weeks, that should give them time to get established and we're excited about that. The Taste of Lewisburg fundraiser is underway and in preparations. All proceeds would go toward Parks and Recreation for that. There is a, kind of an idea of what would happen in, in your packet that you can look over. I'll be getting Jennifer Pearson involved with that. I need your help, Jen. And I've got some other folks already on board, so we're working on getting sponsorship packets together to get out to the businesses. And hopefully in 2026, we'll add, build on that. It's gonna be this year November fifteenth. We'll kick it off with a 5K. We will have a golf tournament, the Tea and Taste Invitational. And then we'll have the Taste, which is going to incorporate local businesses, restaurants, food trucks, musicians throughout the recreation center. We'll be able to sell tickets for folks to come in and sample what our community offers. And so next year, we will end it with a gala, just not enough time this year to, to make that happen. But the goal is to hopefully raise close to twenty thousand dollars each year eventually for Parks and Recreation with this fundraiser. Last and most important, we have received two grants that we've applied for. One is the, both of these grants are through the Tennessee Department of Health. One is Project Diabetes and it's a three-hundred-thousand-dollar grant that we have received, no match. It's one-hundred percent funded. And that will go toward resurfacing of the tennis courts and building four new outdoor pickleball courts with new fencing and installing new LED lighting around that. Thank you. And then, and then the second one, now that, that grant, that project will not be able to start until July twenty-twenty-six. But the Healthy Built Environments Grant is another grant. It's eighty thousand dollars, fully funded. And we will, hopefully the contracts will be ready to go by September of this year. And we'll be putting in new playground equipment and resurfacing that basketball court. And hopefully, maybe even including a couple of pickleball lines to make it a multi-surface court so that the, the neighborhood park there can have access. We also, there's two other grants that I have applied for. I won't find out until the end of this month. One is T-Mobile. It's a hometown grant and that was for Jones Park to resurface the basketball court, new lights and bleachers, and potentially add some pickleball lines there as well. And then the other one is through the NRPA, which is the National Recreation Parks Association. It's a workforce grant for rural Parks and Recreation Departments. It's a twenty-thousand-dollar stipend to assist with workforce development within the Parks and Recreation industry. I'm losing a lot of my kids this year. I call them kids, young adults. We have one that is going to be leaving us at the end of the month. He is going, one of the lifeguards, he's going into the Army. We have thirteen other young adults who will be starting college or going back to college or TCAT. Got one that's working two jobs, including the rec center, and she is in the Hair Academy in Fayetteville. And then over the summer, we had two that were able to go on mission trips. And we just have a great team. And without this team and without these young adults, the rec center would not happen. Parks and Recreation would not happen. And I appreciate Mayor and Council, the recognition that you gave earlier. And thank you so much for your support.
Alan, how much did the penny bring in last year?
About forty-three thousand dollars.
So divide that into three-hundred-and-eighty thousand.
Yeah, it's about nine, about nine cents.
Pardon me?
About nine, nine cents.
About nine cents of property tax equivalency for those. I know that took a lot of hard work and determination and it paid off. And I'm, as we said earlier, we're proud of that.
Thank you.
Any questions for Carrie? I want, stay there, Carrie. I want Chief Breeden to come and not, to tag on to your Red Sand deal and give us an update about human trafficking in Lewisburg.
I'll do it, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Council. I've got a couple of things I'm gonna talk about tonight, but I will, I will start with that. I made some notes because we had talked previously. So obviously, human trafficking is, no city, state, county, or town is immune from the, the problems that happen. Human trafficking is among the top three criminal enterprises in the world, only behind drug trafficking and counterfeiting, with most thinking it's number two due to skewed, skewed reporting numbers. Human trafficking is a billion-dollar business with some estimating two-hundred billion plus in 2024 globally. Human trafficking is a clandestine crime, making it difficult to detect and measure. Reported numbers represent a fraction of the true scope of the problem due to multiple challenges. There's no definitive percentage on human trafficking. That is an issue that I think everybody's running to, because a lot of it is just, it's a, it's a fraction that is actually reported. Victims are often hidden, isolated, loss of identity, and fearful, making it hard to report their situation. Human trafficking is a global problem that expands well into the US. It has been reported in all fifty states. In 2024, TBI's human trafficking reported, or their intake reported. Forty-five percent of the intake cases in Tennessee were between, were children between the ages of thirteen and seventeen years old. That was the largest portion of, of the reporting. There's been a huge shift in the way that human trafficking is looked at from a law enforcement perspective. We tend to look at it, it's known as the three Ps for combating human trafficking, which is prosecution, investigating and punishing those who engage in the act. Protection focuses on providing support and resources to the victims. And prevention, which focuses on addressing the root causes such as poverty, lack of education, and raising awareness. The state has taken huge steps in reducing this crime by establishing the TBI Human Trafficking Unit. This unit is the leading law enforcement agency in the state in fighting human trafficking. They are consistently adding agents into the field to specialize in this crime. They have embedded agents into the Department of Children's Services, the TBI field agents. In fact, we lost one of our detectives last year to the Human Trafficking Unit with the state. The Post Commission now mandates that all officers in Tennessee must obtain training in human trafficking. Going back to what I was talking about before, there's, there's been a big shift in the way it's looked at, where many years ago, a lot of the people that were trafficking were looked at as the offenders and taken to jail for different types of crimes. Where now, the goal is to get to the, the root of that and who's behind making that- is to get to the root of that and who's behind making that, who's putting them up to it, basically making the money. And that's, I think, where you've seen a big shift is that it goes a lot deeper than what it, what it used to. Some of the key highlights in Tennessee's progress under their current report card, Tennessee overall is the most improved state from 2021 to 2023. Nation's first A state and top score in both 2022 and 2023. Leads the nation for laws related to identification and response to survivors of child sex trafficking and stakeholder training. Provides for a survivor-centered multidisciplinary team response to sex trafficking cases. Extends foster care services to the youth 24 years of age and under. Also urges the private nonprofit community to establish a network to provide information, assistance and services and support for persons age 16 to 24 years who were in foster care when they turned 18. The governor appropriated over $3 million in state funds to community-based services to provide support in the development and provision of specialized services for tracking, or I'm sorry, for trafficking survivors. Of the 30 states that statutorily prohibit criminalization of minors for prostitution, Tennessee was one of the first having enacted this critical legal protection for trafficked children in 2011. And I don't know if you all remember, but in July of this year previously, there were eight victims rescued in Giles County and two prosecuted on numerous charges, I think, from trafficking to animal cruelty and things like that. So no, no one is immune from it. It happens. It's just, it's a criminal enterprise where there's a lot of money. They, you know, are estimating what they know is 200-plus billion dollars globally on what they know. So I'm sure it well exceeds that. But Tennessee's one of the leading states when it comes to fighting it and combating it, which is a good thing, so.
So you said you lost a man that went to the state. So we have been investigating that over the years, the human trafficking?
Have we?
Yes.
We have, yes. We have. We work it with what other, if it's a case that might involve the Department of Children's Services, they will work with us. If it's a case that involves a larger scaled operation, we could work it with the Tennessee Bureau of Investigation, so on and so forth. But it's not that it happens often. Again, I think the thing that's important is that there's only a fraction of what is going on that's reported. It's just, it's well hidden and people that are trafficked, depending on what type of trafficking, they typically don't stay in one place long, so they move pretty quick. But yes, we have worked. Doesn't happen often, but it has. But most recently, I think there were eight victims that were rescued in Giles County and that was last month.
The Red Sand Project is part of this to make awareness of how terrible and widespread this crime is. It's some things you don't want to know about, but it is such a despicable.
Well, you can only imagine how bad it is in some of these other countries where they, they really don't care and they don't train, they don't know what to look for and they, it's about the money.
Do you have anything else to report for the police?
Not on that. I do have a few other things.
Well, thank you, Carrie.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Carrie. So Mayor, again, I won't, I know everybody's ready to go probably, but I was going to go over a few things. Well, one, I'll talk about the month of July. The department had 1,255 service calls in July. There were 21 new cases that were assigned out to the Investigation Division. So it stayed pretty busy. There's one other thing I want to talk about a little bit and I don't normally bring this up in these meetings at all, but I just kind of wanted to recognize one of our officers, our agents that is not often at the department. He's assigned out to the DEA. And he, they work a lot of hours, a lot of different shifts and things like that. So, and I think Frank had actually mentioned earlier, we were talking, he mentioned in the prayer about the drug epidemic that we currently face in the country. And again, we were talking about criminal enterprises with drug trafficking being the number one known criminal enterprise in the country. So I won't get into the specifics of the who, what, when and where and all that, but what I would like to do is recognize Lieutenant Miller with our department, who is assigned to the DEA.
Is he here?
He is not here. He doesn't like to come out and be seen or anything like that. He tends to, if you know him, you understand what I'm saying. But in the last two months, he's been working with the 17th Judicial Drug Task Force, which is brought, made up of Marshall, Lincoln, Moore and Bedford. In two months, in this cross-agency cooperation, they have taken a quarter of a million dollars in illegal drug proceeds, a quarter of a kilo of powder and crack cocaine, 20 pounds of high-grade marijuana, numerous weapons, two confirmed stolen, and 2,500-plus scheduled narcotics pills, which the majority included or were laced with fentanyl. Several vehicles were taken. There was, there was a lot of equipment, but I won't go into the specifics of it, but I just kind of wanted to throw that out there. This is a, this is two months and this happened and it, I won't say where, but within the judicial district. These were things that were taken off the street that would have been here in Lewisburg. There's some that are still there, but this was stopped. At least this didn't make it to the street. So again, and I wanted to recognize his work and what he's done in the last, and just, if you'll, I'll let you pass these around and look. These are not, it's not a lot, but it kind of gives you an idea as to what I'm talking about.
Sure.
Questions for the chief? Appreciate so much. Those of you that risk your lives, all the firemen and policemen that risk their lives every day to keep us safe. There's some, there's some things you'd rather not know. It's reality and thank goodness we've got good people working on that. It's horrible that human trafficking is, what else is next?
Seven.
Did I miss anybody?
No.
Okay, and what else?
Seven C. Any other additional business or announcements?
Yeah, Mayor, I got one, something I'd like to read.
All right.
It's an email that came to me. Says Connie and I want to thank you for your major part with correcting and controlling the rain runoff at our place of business, Ken's Guns and More. We just experienced a heavy rain and the redirection of water was exactly what we needed. Please pass on our appreciation to Brandon and the city officials responsible for the repairs. It was greatly appreciated. Ken and Connie Tyson. And I'd like that to be entered in the record and I'll give Gina a copy of it.
Anybody else? Councilwoman Thomas, I didn't forget your name this time, so I'm doing better. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
A motion.
Motion by Councilman Crutcher. Is Sarah second?
Oh, Senator.
Councilman Robertson seconded it. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned. Thank you very much.
We'll add, build on that. It's going to be this year, November 15th. We'll kick it off with a 5K. We will have a golf tournament, the Tea and Taste Invitational. And then we'll have the Taste, which is going to incorporate local businesses, restaurants, food trucks, musicians throughout the Recreation Center. We'll be able to sell tickets for folks to come in and sample what our community offers. And so next year, we will end it with a gala, just not enough time this year to make that happen. But the goal is to hopefully raise close to $20,000 each year eventually for Parks and Recreation with this fundraiser. Last and most important, we have received two grants that we've applied for. One is the, both of these grants are through the Tennessee Department of Health. One is Project Diabetes and it's a $300,000 grant that we have received, no match. It's 100% funded and that will go toward resurfacing of the tennis courts and building for new outdoor pickleball courts with new fencing and installing new LED lighting around that. Thank you. And then, and then the second one, now that, that grant, that project will not be able to start until July 2026. But the Healthy Built Environments Grant is another grant. It's $80,000, fully funded and we will, hopefully the contracts will be ready to go by September of this year. And we'll be putting in new playground equipment and resurfacing that basketball court and hopefully maybe even including a couple of pickleball lines to make it a multi-surface court so that the neighborhood park there can have access. We also, there's two other grants that I have applied for. I won't find out until the end of this month. One is T-Mobile. It's a hometown grant and that was for Jones Park to resurface the basketball court, new lights and bleachers and potentially add some pickleball lines there as well. And then the other one is through the NRPA, which is the National Recreation Parks Association. It's a workforce grant for rural Parks and Recreation Departments. It's a $20,000 stipend to assist with workforce development within the Parks and Recreation I'm losing a lot of my kids this year. I call them kids, young adults. We have one that is going to be leaving us at the end of the month. He is going, one of the lifeguards, he's going into the Army. We have 13 other young adults who will be starting college or going back to college or TCAT. Got one that's working two jobs, including the REC Center and she is in the Hair Academy in Fayetteville. And then over the summer, we had two that were able to go on mission trips and we just have a great team and without this team and without these young adults, the REC Center would not happen. Parks and Recreation would not happen and I appreciate Mayor and Council, the recognition that you gave earlier and thank you so much for your support.
Alan, how much did the penny bring in last year?
About $43,000.
So divide that into 380,000.
Yeah, that's about nine, about nine cents.
Pardon me?
About nine, nine cents.
About nine cents of property tax equivalency for those. I know that took a lot of hard work and determination and it paid off and I'm, as we said earlier, we're proud of that.
Thank you.
Any questions for Carrie? I want, stay there Carrie. I want Chief Breeden to come and not to tag on to your Red Sand deal and give us an update about human trafficking in Lewisburg.
I'll do it, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. I've got a couple of things I'm going to talk about tonight, but I will, I will start with that. I made some notes because we had talked previously. So obviously, human trafficking is, no city, state, county, or town is immune from the problems that happen. Human trafficking is among the top three criminal enterprises in the world, only behind drug trafficking and counterfeiting, with most thinking it's number two due to skewed reporting numbers. Human trafficking is a billion dollar business with some estimating 200 billion plus in 2024 globally. Human trafficking is a clandestine crime, making it difficult to detect and measure. Reported numbers represent a fraction of the true scope of the problem due to multiple challenges. There's no definitive percentage on human trafficking. That is an issue that I think everybody's run into because a lot of it is just, it's a fraction that is actually reported. Victims are often hidden, isolated, loss of identity and fearful, making it hard to report their situation. Human trafficking is a global problem that expands well into the U.S. It has been reported in all 50 states. In 2024, TBI's human trafficking reported, or their intake reported. Forty-five percent of the intake cases in Tennessee were between, were children between the ages of 13 and 17 years old. That was the largest portion of the reporting. There's been a huge shift in the way that human trafficking is looked at from a law enforcement perspective. We tend to look at it, it's known as the three Ps for combating human trafficking, which is prosecution, investigating and punishing those who engage in the act. Protection focuses on providing support and resources to the victims. And prevention, which focuses on addressing the root causes such as poverty, lack of education and raising awareness. The state has taken huge steps in reducing this crime by establishing the TBI Human Trafficking Unit. This unit is the leading law enforcement agency in the state in fighting human trafficking. They are consistently adding agents into the field to specialize in this crime. They have embedded agents into the Department of Children's Services, the TBI Field Agents. In fact, we lost one of our detectives last year to the Human Trafficking Unit with the The Post Commission now mandates that all officers in Tennessee must obtain training in human trafficking. Going back to what I was talking about before, there's, there's been a big shift in the way it's looked at where many years ago, a lot of the people that were trafficking were looked at as the offenders and taken to jail for different types of crimes where now the goal is to get to the root of that and who's behind making that, who's putting them up to it, basically making the money. And that's, I think, where you've seen a big shift is that it goes a lot deeper than what it, what it used to. Some of the key highlights in Tennessee's progress under their current report card, Tennessee overall is the most improved state from 2021 to 2023. Nation's first A state and top score in both 2022 and 2023. Leads the nation for laws related to identification and response to survivors of child sex trafficking and stakeholder training. Provides for a survivor-centered multidisciplinary team response to sex trafficking cases. Extends foster care services to the youth 24 years of age and under. Also urges the private nonprofit community to establish a network to provide information, assistance and services and support for persons age 16 to 24 years who are in foster care when they turn 18. The governor appropriated over $3 million in state funds to community-based services to provide support in the development and provision of specialized services for tracking, or I'm sorry, for trafficking survivors. Of the 30 states that statutorily prohibit criminalization of minors for prostitution, Tennessee was one of the first having enacted this critical legal protection for trafficked children in 2011. And I don't know if you all remember, but in July of this year previously, there were eight victims rescued in Giles County and two prosecuted on numerous charges, I think, from trafficking to animal cruelty and things like that. So no, no one is immune from it. It happens. It's just, it's a criminal enterprise where there's a lot of money. They, you know, are estimating what they know is, is 200-plus billion dollars globally on what they know. So I'm sure it well exceeds that, but Tennessee's one of the leading states when it comes to fighting it and combating it, which is a good thing, so.
So you said you lost a man that went to the state, so we have been investigating that over the years, the human trafficking?
Have we?
Yes.
We have, yes. We have. We work it with what other, if it's a case that might involve the Department of Children's Services, they will work with us. If it's a case that involves a larger scaled operation, we could work it with the Tennessee Bureau of Investigation, so on and so forth. But it's not that it happens often. Again, I think the thing that's important is that there's only a fraction of what is going on that's reported. It's just, it's well hidden and, and people that are trafficked, depending on what type of trafficking, they typically don't stay in one place long, so they, they move pretty quick. But yes, we have worked it. Doesn't happen often, but it has. But most recently, I think there were eight victims that were rescued in Giles County. And that was last month.
The Red Sand Project is part of this to make awareness of how terrible and widespread this crime is. It's some things you don't want to know about, but it is such a despicable.
Well, you can only imagine how bad it is in some of these other countries where they, they really don't care and they don't train, they don't know what to look for and they, it's, it's about the money.
Do you have anything else to report for the police?
Not on that. I do have a few other things.
Well, thank you, Kerry.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Kerry. So Mayor, again, I won't tell, I know everybody's ready to go probably, but I was going to go over a few things. Well, one, I'll talk about the, the month of July. The department had 1,255 service calls in July. There were 21 new cases that were assigned out to the investigation division. So it, it stayed pretty busy. There's one other thing I want to talk about a little bit, and I don't normally bring this up in these meetings at all, but I just kind of wanted to recognize one of, of our officers, our agents that is not often at the department. He's assigned out to the DEA. And he, they work a lot of hours, a lot of different shifts and things like that. So, and I think Frank had actually mentioned earlier, we were talking, he mentioned in the prayer about the, the drug epidemic that we currently face in the country. And again, we were talking about criminal enterprises with drug trafficking being the number one known criminal enterprise in, in the country. So I won't get into the specifics of the who, what, when and where and all that, but what I would like to do is recognize Lieutenant Miller with our department, who is assigned to the DEA.
Is he here?
He is not here. He, he doesn't like to come out and be seen or anything like that. He tends to, if you know him, you understand what I'm saying. In the last two months, he's been working with the 17th Judicial Drug Task Force, which is brought, made up of Marshall, Lincoln, Moore and Bedford. In two months, in this cross-agency cooperation, they have taken a quarter of a million dollars in illegal drug proceeds, a quarter of a kilo of powder and crack cocaine, 20 pounds of high-grade marijuana, numerous weapons, two, two confirmed stolen, and 2,500-plus scheduled narcotics pills, which the majority included or were laced with fentanyl. Several vehicles were taken, there was, there was a lot of equipment, but I won't go into the specifics of it, but I just kind of wanted to throw that out there. This is a, this is two months and this happened, and that, I won't say where, but within the judicial district. These were things that were taken off the street that would have been here in Lewisburg. There's some that are still there, but this was stopped. At least this didn't make it to the street. So again, and I wanted to recognize his work and what he's done in the last, and just, if you'll, I'll let you pass these around and look. These are not, it's not a lot, but it kind of give you an idea as to what, what I'm talking about.
Sure. Write a letter.
Questions for the chief? Appreciate so much those of you that risk your lives, all the firemen and policemen that risk their lives every day to keep us safe. And there's some, there's some things you'd rather not know. It's reality and thank goodness we've got good people working on that. It's horrible that, that human trafficking is, what else is next?
Seven.
Did I miss anybody? Did I miss anybody?
No.
Okay, and what else?
Seven C. Any other additional business or announcements?
Yeah, Mayor, I got one, something I'd like to read.
All right.
It's an email that came to me. Says Connie and I want to thank you for your major part with correcting and controlling the rain runoff at our place of business, Ken's Guns and More. We just experienced a heavy rain and the redirection of water was exactly what we needed. Please pass on our appreciation to Brandon and the city officials responsible for the repairs. It was greatly appreciated. Ken and Connie Tyson. And I'd like that to be entered in the record and I'll give Gina a copy of it.
Anybody else? Councilwoman Thomas, I didn't forget your name this time, so I'm doing better. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I motion.
Motion by Councilman Crutcher, is Sarah Second?
Oh, Senator.
Council Robinson seconded it. All in favor say aye.
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 We stand adjourned. Thank you very much.